You want to make the Janus?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
They've got all this time in, but we're gonna credit that account.
Can you turn it on? I have two four six eight on mine.
Yeah, he said that, but he didn't say.
No. It should set up automatically. Mine does. I'm not even gonna use it because I'm down to 27 percent power.
I've heard because eight years.
I feel for you guys, I tell you. It's gonna go better on this side first. Everybody's really fired up about.
Hey, how are you?
Oh. You know, you hit. You hit the.
Oh, yeah.
Because I've got some guys over here, I mean, sure, I'm gonna get. I'll get some blowback.
We're gonna go ahead and call the March 18th City Council meeting to order. If everyone would please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is founded by a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so far.
All right. So announcements, the Action Club?
Action, Action Club.
Action, sorry. Are you gonna do this?
Sure, I'd like to have the Action Club come up and introduce themselves. It is a new service club that the Kiwanis has that got started here in Fishers and Geist. It's a newly formed club here in the area to help provide services and do good deeds here in our community. And so we've got the chapter advisor Dana Potchmitz and some of the officers. So they're gonna introduce themselves, talk a little bit about what they do.
Hi, we are here from the Action Club tonight. We wanted to let you guys know that we're a new group in the community that is working to kind of bridge the gap between the community and people with disabilities. So we're working through service projects with various members of the community, both businesses and individuals. And we have an upcoming meeting in April, on April 3rd, from 5:30 to 6:30. We'd like to invite anybody that would like to come. And then I wanted to give the officers some time to introduce themselves. They've been working really hard to get this club up and going.
Hello, my name is Caroline Dunklau and I am the Vice President here at the Action Club. And I'm really honored to be the Vice President because I want to be with people, have fun with them, and teach the people who have disabilities how to honor themselves if they have disabilities. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm James Delly. Action Club. I'm the president.
James has been doing a great job.
A great job.
Thank you, James.
Hello, this is Paul Steven Pallett. I'm the treasurer officer of the Kiwanis Action Club. I try to help with the many with disabilities with everyone.
Thank you.
So if you guys have any questions, we will be here tonight to answer any questions you might have about Action Club.
Can you just share a little bit about what you do and the purpose of it? And then what you've been doing this past week was Action Club Week? And so tell me, tell us a little bit about some of the things that you guys have been working on since the club got inducted a month ago, last month.
Yeah, so it's been a crazy 2009. We've been working really hard with the Kiwanis Club. This week, or sorry, last week was Action Club Awareness Week. So we've just been raising awareness about Action Club, so good thing that we're here, right? And then we have been working with the Kiwanis on their Easter egg hunt that's coming up in April, so working with them to kind of put together Easter eggs. And we're also working with the Fishers Police Department for upcoming projects in the summer, so just really trying to build connections with the community. And our main goal is to just spread awareness about disabilities and how we can be a part of the community. Same thing with the March Disability Awareness Month, you know, bridging that gap between our community and people with disabilities.
When is your next meeting? If anyone's interested in attending or wants information on how to join?
So the next meeting is April 3rd at Geist Promise Road Church. And we, if you have any questions, you can contact me, Dana Potchmitz. So if you would like any more information, definitely reach out to Cecilia or myself. You can find me, I'll be here all evening.
Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is proclamations. Selena, if you want to tell us about the Janus 40th anniversary.
Janus is a wonderful organization that has served those with, I'm assuming some of them may be from the Action Club attend Janus. And I know Janus has a Action Club that participates out there of helping those with disabilities. My daughter attends there and glad to present this proclamation. Whereas April 2019 has been designated as Janus Developmental Services Month to celebrate and to recognize the 40th anniversary of Janus providing individuals with disabilities the opportunity to participate and contribute within the community. And whereas the staff members and the board members of Janus Developmental Services strive to make community employers aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings as disabilities is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of individuals with disabilities to contribute to society and experience full in the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society. And whereas the staff members and board members of Janus Developmental Services continue to work tirelessly each day to provide the necessary programs, services, and supports to enable individuals with disabilities to attain the crucial life skills needed to live meaningfully, productive, and self-fulfilled lives. And whereas the staff and board members of Janus Developmental Services Incorporated provide individuals with disabilities the opportunity to support and to make informed choices and decisions, live in communities where such individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, contribute to their families and community, have interdependent friendships and relationships with others, and achieve full inclusion in society. Therefore, Mayor Scott Fadness, the City of Fishers hereby claims April 2019 as Janus Developmental Services Month.
Thank you, Selena.
Welcome.
Next up is the March Disability Awareness Month video. Do you want to introduce this, Cecilia? Oh, I'm sorry, pictures.
Come on up. Congratulations on 40 years of service.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Janus, for everything that you do because you truly are a real community partner for our community here in Hamilton County and in Fishers. And as Selena was talking.
The month of March has been.
I want to show you this video, but one of the things I want to just share is we have two events coming up for March Disability Awareness Month. This Saturday, March 23rd, at Fishers High School, between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. will be the Adaptive Sports Showcase. We're gonna highlight various organizations and athletic abilities of people with disabilities from blind baseball to adaptive basketball, soccer. We have gymnastics, we have pacemates. Zeke from the soccer team is coming. And so we have a lot of giveaways and a lot of mascots from both high schools and different athletes there. So we invite you to attend that. And we also have the showing of Intelligent Lives. It's a documentary that follows three individuals. It's made by award-making filmmaker Dan Haybiv. And that will be at Fishers High School Auditorium on Tuesday, March 26th, at 6:30 p.m. And that's also free. And you can go to the website to get more information and details. So we encourage you to come. Thank you.
The month of March has been designated as Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities by the Governor of the State of Indiana.
Whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience.
And in no way diminishes the right of individuals with disabilities to live independently.
Enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience full.
In the economic, political, social, cultural.
And educational mainstream of American society.
And whereas family members, friends, and members of the community.
Can play a central role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities.
Especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services.
And public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities.
To be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings.
Properly include providing individuals with disabilities.
The opportunities and support.
To make informed choices and decisions.
Live in homes and communities where such individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens.
Pursue meaningful and productive lives.
Contribute to their family, community, state, and nation.
Therefore, I Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, along with the Honorable City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Fishers. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Fishers to seek counsel and input from any person or group with knowledge and expertise in matters concerning disabilities.
all of the events that we have planned for the month of March, especially the March Disability Awareness Subcommittee and all those members and community partners that have been involved. It's a big, major undertaking, and we've done a lot to help empower the community this month on disabilities. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cobble, for all of your work on the disabilities group. It's really inspiring to see where you've brought that initiative over the last few years. I know we're all very proud of your work as well as the committees. Tonight, we have one more proclamation. It's apparently a busy month for proclamations. But this one's near and dear to my heart as I've lost loved ones from Parkinson's. Tonight, we have a proclamation, and I'll read this as follows, and then present it to the folks that are here tonight to represent. Whereas the Indiana Parkinson's Foundation was founded as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization in Hamilton County in February of 2009. And whereas Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will more than double by 2040. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States according to the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas the Indiana Parkinson Foundation is a place for people with Parkinson's disease to mentally, physically, and spiritually fight the effects of Parkinson's disease. And whereas the Indiana Parkinson's Foundation is dedicated to improving the quality of life for PWP's through exercise, emotional support, counseling, and through prayer. The CLIME is IPF's exercise program and is a place for reflection and connection to renew people with Parkinson's for the work and pressures of their daily lives. And whereas the month of April is Parkinson's Awareness Month, and IPF is hosting their 7th annual Choose to Move, the race to end Parkinson's 10K, 5K, 1-mile run on April 13th, 2019, in the City of Fishers at Winton Park. Therefore, I Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim April 13th, 2019, as Indiana's Parkinson's Foundation Day. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Scott. It's kind of neat, even though there are several proclamations, to see how important all of these groups are in the community. So thank you for bringing it to all of our attention. Now we have some exciting presentations to two state champions. The first one is the HSC Girls Basketball Team, if they'd like to come up. And I don't know if there's the coach that would like to speak and tell us a little bit about the final victory. We were somewhere, oh, I think we were at the Fireman's Fund, and the announcement was made halfway through the dinner. So we followed you from afar. Is there a captain that wishes to speak?
Hi, everybody. We're the Royals, and we won this year at the state championships. It was probably the best experience we've all have had in basketball in our careers. And we just want to say thank you for having us. We really appreciate it. Go Royals.
Can you repeat next year?
What?
Can you repeat next year?
Ah, some of us will be here, but we hope they do.
Well, great. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations again to them. Next, we have the state champion Riverside Intermediate School Math Bowl Champions.
Are you gonna just say?
Yeah.
Hello, first of all, thank you for inviting us. This is a wonderful opportunity for us. I just want to let everyone know that we have obviously worked really hard to become state champs. A couple of the kids up here are actually state champs two years in a row. For those of you that don't know how this may go, there were over 502 teams in the state who competed for this. And of the 502 teams, there were only two teams that scored a 29 out of 32, and we were one of those teams and ended up breaking the tiebreaker. There's four tiebreakers, and in the fourth tiebreaker, we ended up beating the other team and getting state champs again. Riverside Intermediate, this is our third year in a row being state champ, so I'm very proud of these kids and the hard work that they have put into it. So congratulations, you guys.
All right, Chris, what's the area of the track field? What's the area of a track field? That's the final question. Yes. Yeah, what? It's not a legal question. Awesome. Well, it's a quarter mile round. So what's the area within? Okay, my favorite part is that you just asked if that was a math question.
Getting cranky there. Little guy getting crankier. Picture.
We're gonna ask.
Thank you, guys.
Nice job. Oh, where are you being?
Johnny.
Oh, gosh.
John.
Thank you so much. So I heard that the last question was.
Are you all gonna stay? We would welcome you too, or if you'd like to leave, you can too.
Okay, okay, well, I'll have to follow up.
Families want to get dinner.
I was gonna say, that'll clear out. So I just told Chris the final question for the Math Bowl I asked one of the kids.
It wasn't the one where we had the students have to. What should we do to better the government or city? And then they leave, when they have the question, and then we? Are we supposed to answer?
If any of you guys want to hear John Weingard's speech, you may want to stay for a while.
I know how to clear a room, baby.
I know how to clear a room, baby.
A lot of families, that's good. I mean, both big teams.
All right, John, do you want to give us the Finance Committee report?
Sure, Finance Committee met last week, discussed a number of items. One thing that is on the agenda this evening is request R031819A, request to approve a resolution of the City of Fishers, Indiana, reestablishing a cumulative capital development fund pursuant to Indiana Code Section. I won't even go through Code Section, but there is a public hearing tonight. I will kind of give everybody an FYI, this is something that's statutorily required. This is not going to increase anybody's taxes. We only talk about taxes in the fall, we're doing budget season. So if you want to come up and talk in a public hearing about a tax increase, this isn't happening. All this is merely a statutory requirement to reestablish this fund. That is involved with the capital assets of our city. We talked about the financial statements, various, as we move over to our new software, and also impending audit by our independent CPA firm, they're already starting to make some visits here. So Lisa will provide more clarification on this particular item, item 11 on the budget, when she's up here with, when it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you, John. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Todd, second by John. All in favor? Aye. Closed? Okay, motion passes. Item 7, R031819B. Megan.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. My first item for your review tonight and approval is the Second Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement for Knowledge Services. In May of 2017, Council approved an Economic Development Agreement for Knowledge Services relocation of their headquarters to Fishers. It's an 80,000-square-foot office building. Their commitment was about 400 new jobs to the city with amazing wages. They purchased 17 acres on the north. to the city with amazing wages. They purchased 17 acres on the northeast corner of I-69 and 106th Street from Navient. At that time, when they approached the city council, it was about a, really just looking at their building instead of the entire development area of those 17 acres. Since that time, and since including their development partners, they're taking a more holistic approach to that area and trying to be very thoughtful. So, the Second Amendment is to extend the commencement of their construction from March 31st until the end of September of this year. The city is extremely confident that Joe and Julie Bilowski, and they've reiterated this to us, that they're committed to making this an incredible development and just making sure that they're thoughtful. So, we ask for your approval tonight of that amendment. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Selena. All in favor? Aye. Close? Very good. Thank you. Item R-031819C. Megan, again.
I'm always so bad at this.
All right, the second item tonight is an approval of a project agreement. In December, the city council approved a project agreement for First Internet Bank SPF 15 as part of a larger development with Browning Investments. This is the north side development of, or the north side project agreement for that larger development. As part of this, we anticipate about $61 million worth of new investment. The area that it encompasses is north of 116th Street. The western border is the, what will be the Nickel Plate Trail. Eastern border is Maple Street, and the northern border is North Street. As part of this project, Browning Investments and CRG, their joint development name is Nickel Plate North Properties. They anticipate 235 new residential units. That'll include 9,400 square feet of additional retail and office. That does not include the existing structures along 116th Street, those three buildings that are there right now. Those will also remain. As part of this, there is a 329-spot parking garage, and 55 of those spots will be dedicated to the city for our exclusive use. The other great part about this is that they are working very closely with the city on incorporating the main plaza area. That'll be to the north of our existing buildings right now with the Nickel Plate Trail and making it a really cohesive area that improves pedestrian connectivity. As part of this $61 million investment, the city is offering various incentives for the project. The first one is land acquisition costs for the 11 different parcels that are included in this area. The parking garage impact fee waiver will be offering allowances for various utility and public infrastructure work. This will be allowances towards the public plaza that I mentioned earlier, work along Maple Street, and along the public right-of-way on 116th Street. We'll also be offering incentives to help rehabilitate the existing buildings along 116th Street. It's important to the city that we're able to keep the vitality of that area and then encourage those existing tenants to be able to stay there. So, as part of our negotiation, we've also included language that requires Browning Investments and CRG to maintain the existing tenants' existing rents throughout the construction timeline. And then, we have a set amount that they are required to start their rents at a $15 a square foot triple net upon completion of the project. For this project, these various incentives will be covered with a $21 million bond, something that we talked about with our previous project, was being able to show the impact that this will continue to have on the city with our existing taxes in the area, and then also the school referendum. So, just pointing out here that there is an existing assessed value of about $1.4 million. Those existing taxes will continue to move through, but then we also have the school referendum of $173,000 that will pass through. Tonight, we have Jamie Browning and Chris Reed from Browning and CRG, if you would like to come up and say a few words.
Good evening. Again, yeah, I'm Jamie Browning with Browning Investments, and this is my partner here, Chris Reed with CRG Residential. You've gotten a pretty thorough explanation of the project. We're very excited to begin the process of redeveloping this area. I think we have a very unique and good floor plan and site plan that has offices, retail, plenty of parking, and residential units to go with, to go onto the site. And as was mentioned, we're building a plaza area in between the Nickel Plate Restaurants and the three remaining buildings to the east. And obviously, we're retaining those buildings for future use, and there'll be some rehabilitation that goes along with that. So, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Reed, would you like to say anything?
Thanks. Thanks, Council. I can't tell you, you know, we've spent a lot of effort behind the scenes on this, this project with the thought of how do we preserve downtown Fishers from its history? And so, there was a lot of effort to make sure that those three structures were incorporated into this asset. So, we're excited to be here. This has been a long, long road a-ho and to get this thing off to the races. So, how exciting. I mean, the mayor was very clear to me, this was a vital asset, and take it, take it very seriously. So, I'm a Fishers resident, all you know, so this is home base to me. This will be a personal pet project, and my goal is to make us all proud. Thank you.
Questions or comments from Council?
Can you share a little bit about what the plaza, like the vision of the plaza, and kind of how it will connect with like the Nickel Plate Trail, and what you foresee is kind of the vision there, so that people get a better understanding?
Cecilia, the trail comes, comes out about midway back, so that, as you know, the trail goes underneath 116th Street. So, that plaza will have a connector bridge that goes up and over to connect into the, which would be the west side of the, west side of the trail. That will be art statues, what we, a big statue, what we have laid out, brick pavers. So, it's very pedestrian friendly. Our whole thing was to try to start connecting all four sides of the street right there. I hope that answers your question.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I may add one. Maybe you've heard this, but just kind of want to go of record, because I participated in a retail focus group that we had recently. And one of the things that came out from that discussion was just the difficulty for some of the small shops as, as things are developing, to find a replacement location for themselves. If, if there's a way, as you finalize your plans, to incorporate a little more commercial space, I mean, it could be office, could be some mix of retail office. I know the Spark has done a nice job, and I think actually has been kind of surprised at, at how much commercial was ending up locating on some of those ground floors. So, to the extent that you can do that, I know Maple Street really honestly is, is, is becoming a growing commercial corridor. So, that may be an area, but I'll leave that to you. I understand there's some balance that has to be maintained with parking and such, and we've been sensitive to that. So, if you can, as you finalize your plans, try and work toward that, that would be my request. But I'm generally, I'm in favor of what you're doing, so.
Well, we, I mean, there was a lot of discussion, Rich, about that, and there is a possibility that we could creep south on North Street. So...
Okay.
We're willing to, if, if it can make sense, then we're willing to take a hard look at it.
Well, I'm excited about the project and everything going on in downtown Fishers. I moved here in 89, and used to walk up and down the streets from Charleston Crossing to McDonald's. That's where I worked. So, I'd have people scream out of their cars making fun of me because I wore my uniform down there, but, but there was not, there was not much to do. There wasn't much. I felt like I went back. Yeah, I didn't. I wasn't real smart back then. It wasn't. But anyways, it's exciting to come into Fishers, to drive down downtown, and to walk, stop and walk, and see all the people that are out. And this continues to drive that vision, and I just, I just am excited about it. And if there's no other comments, I want to make a motion to approve.
Anybody else? Any other comments? All right. Todd's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All in favor? Aye. Close?
One abstention.
Oh, one abstention. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Item number 9, 031819F.
Good evening, Council. Lindsay Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I believe you said we're here on 031819F. Is that correct, item 9?
The ordinance.
So, with mowing season upon us, I'm here with an amendment to the Weed and Grass Ordinance. We change the definition of weed and other ranked vegetation to specify that all plants set forth in the Indiana's Code section on the weed control boards is included in our definition. I noticed that many other communities are actually using this in their definitions, and I took a look at it, and I thought it would be a good fit here. We kept the prohibition of grass in excess of eight inches tall. We kept some of the exceptions that are currently in there for wetlands, nature preserves, undeveloped areas, our stormwater best management practice areas. We also added an exception for golf courses that are in operation. Basically, they're landscape areas that include the, the teeing ground, the fairways, the rough, the hazard, and the putting areas. So, we would be able to enforce in the event that any of these golf courses shut their doors. We've also had some questions in the past about enforcing against golf courses for some of the landscape that they do, and that's not something that we currently do. So, this kind of further sets that out and makes it more explicit, so there's no confusion in the future as to whether we're going to enforce against golf courses or not. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Council? I'll make a comment. Lindsay, I think you've done a great job addressing what I think we were trying to be proactively, you know, protecting against, and I think this ordinance does it. Yet, I will say that I had a couple of conversations today with one resident, and she had asked if we could have some additional time to work through some of her concerns. So, while it is possible that we could have all three readings tonight, I said that I would vote against that. So, I think I just want to make that known to people as we decide about what to do with the readings.
What were the concerns?
I think where it primarily got bogged down was about Heather and the concern there about, because I think for most people who play golf, they understand that Heather can be, you know, a nice attractive feature, and, you know, if you're playing in, you know, like, over in link-style European courses, I mean, that's, that's part of the golf course. I know even for the Hawthorns where I play, that's, that's an attractive part of the golf course. I personally am in favor of that, yet her concern was related to that, that it becomes unruly, and, and actually, you know, weed-infested, also with, you know, rats and other animals that might congregate there. So, I, I think the discussion will probably be ways in which we can kind of bridge that, if you will, that concern, and still allow for that to be included. So, that's where, as, as she raised the question and concern, I said, well, let me raise that with Council, and we'll try and have further discussion about it.
Well, fine.
I thought we had done, because I had some discussion with Lindsay, actually, with the drafting of this, that we had done a pretty good job addressing it. I honestly didn't anticipate there being a problem, but it, it came back that there was concern. So, being respectful to that wish, again, that's, I would ask that we not have all three readings tonight.
So, first reading?
First reading.
Well, if I may, I'm not, I'm not a golfer, so I am not super familiar with the Heather aspect, but from what I understand, it is part of the landscape and kind of the motif of the golf course. It's still not something that we would go in and tell a golf course, hey, this is over eight inches, you need to cut it down, because it is part of their landscaping. If it's going to get unruly, and if there's rodents, then she can certainly call our inspectors to come out and take a look at it, and that is a matter of public health and safety. So, that would kind of step outside of the weed and grass, and we would address it, probably not in the Weed and Grass Ordinance, but maybe with some other enforcement mechanism. And then, I think she had another concern about, you said, it was unruly in the Heather. What was her other concern?
I mean, there were, really, I remember there being questions about the definition itself, and what was included and everything, so.
So, it's going to be impossible to define everything in this ordinance, and even if this went to court, if it was challenged, a judge is not probably going to look any further than the plain definition of controlled Heather. He's going to look and see if it's ambiguous. If it is, he's going to look at the legislative intent. And honestly, it's pretty, it's pretty clear here that what we're trying to do is accept out any golf course landscaping, and that would include controlled Heather. I'm certainly happy to work with her on any language, or, and with you, of course, on any language that you may propose, but I'm not sure that we're going to get much more than what we already have. But again, certainly happy to address those in the, in the coming weeks and come back next month on third reading.
Yep. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
So, you're saying you're not going to pass tonight, and I made, so...
Yeah, I guess John made a motion to...
You will not suspend the rules. You will not pass them.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'll have the motion for first reading then.
Okay.
Right?
Correct.
What's next? We'll circle back and appreciate the feedback.
Did that in deference, yes. Okay. Thank you. Item, let's see, R-031819E. Is that you again?
That's me again, Lindsay Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here tonight to request approval of an interlocal between the City of Fishers and Hamilton County for the Youth Assistance Program. As you know, YAP helps at-risk youth in the community to prevent them from becoming part of the juvenile and criminal system. The Council Nonprofit Committee met last summer and approved an allocation of $65,000 for YAP. So, this interlocal dictates how the funds are disseminated and the terms of that allocation. It's substantially similar to the interlocals that we've had in past years. The only thing that we changed this year was to allow for a yearly renewal. So, every year, the interlocal renews without us having to come back. It does have a termination date if Council decides they don't want to fund it for the next year. There's a termination date of November 1st, so that we can get through the budget approval process and decide if we're going to fund it or not, and then we would just give notice that we're, we're not going to continue. The Hamilton County Council already approved this version of the interlocal, and they are sending it to the other Hamilton County communities to be approved as well. It's a, as you probably know, it's a joint venture between Hamilton County and all the other communities in Hamilton County to provide these services. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any questions, Council?
Motion.
Second. All right. Motion made by Todd, second by David. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Item R-031819A.
Good evening. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. I'm here to discuss the motion to reestablish the Cumulative Capital Development Fund. A little background, the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, commonly known as the CCD Fund, was first established by Fishers in 1984, went into effect 1/1/85. It is provided under Indiana Code that you can establish this, and it can be used for any municipal purpose. For Fishers, we use it for capital development projects, such as HVAC replacement, new roofs for various city buildings, windows, repayment of our fleet leases. And through our fleet leases, that's where we get our fire equipment, our capital for police cars, the 15 to 18 that we replace each year, our finance through the fleet loan. The State of Indiana changed their law a few years ago, and you are required to reestablish the CCD Fund now every year if you wish to continue it. And so, this has no effect, as you was mentioned, on the 2019 tax rate. This is something that is for... This is something that is for 2020. Under state law, you have to reestablish your CCD Fund for the next year by April 30th of the current year. If there are any questions, the max can only be .05 per $100 of assessed value, and that's the max. And it's included with the rest of the city's unit tax rate on property tax bills.
Before we open it up to the public, this is a public hearing. Are there any questions at this point from Council? All right, so this is a public hearing. If you, if there are members of the public who wish to speak, if you would introduce yourself, state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions? John, do you want to say anything further?
I think we've covered extremely well, as usual. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass on first reading.
Motion made by John, second by Todd to suspend the rules and approve on first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve by John, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Item twelve, zero three one eight one nine A.
Good evening, Council. Tony Bagato, Director of Planning and Zoning. Real quick, I wanted to introduce Jesse Beauchel, who's been with our team since August, but it's his first time presenting here, so treat him kindly. But he grew up in Indianapolis and he went to Ball State, making him the fourth member of the team from Ball State. So they've done really well on their planning program. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jesse. Just want to introduce him.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Jesse Beauchel, Planner to of Planning and Zoning. The item you have before you tonight is a rezone for 12244 East 116th Street. It is a 1.97 acre parcel that is currently zoned C2C. Back in 2014, it came before you and was rezoned to C2C for the previous owner to operate the various businesses that they had at this site. Currently, and as you will see, it is east of the Simply Dental PUD. The petitioner is seeking to rezon this property from C2C to PUDC to create the Shamrock Offices PUD, restricting the uses to C1 commercial. The petitioner has proposed a single-story, 15,000 square foot, multi-tenant residential-style office building that will have space for six tenants. And petitioner received PUD Committee approval for architecture and site plan on February 6th and also received unanimous Plan Commission approval on February 6th as well. Just to give you an idea of what it's going to look like, this is the concept aerial right here. As you will see, it will connect to the Simply Dental PUD. I'm just giving it connection. Site plan showing the landscaping and the proposed building. It complements the Simply Dental buildings to the east, and it will also complement the residential nature of the area. Just to give you a points of interest of the ordinance, architectural standards, lighting standards, parking standards, open space standards, service hours are all more restrictive than our UDO currently has. So they will be more conducive to the residential nature of the area and will not cause a nuisance to the area. And the remainder of the development standards will comply with the City of Fishers' UDO. Staff is supportive of the rezone from C2C to PUDC, restricting the uses to C1. C1 requires stricter development standards and is more restrictive on allowed uses. And the ordinance sets standards that will be more conducive to the surrounding residential uses. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We have representation for Shamrock Builders as well if they would like to come.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fagery Baker Daniels. And I'm pleased to be here tonight representing Shamrock Builders and this development project. Thank you, Jesse, for your work with Greg O'Hara. And Greg is having shoulder surgery this week, so I've been in close contact with him, but he is, that's the reason he's not here. But if there's any questions, he's a phone call away if anybody has anything. I think Jesse did a great job explaining the, the project, and we did have unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission and the PUD Committee. The only other thing I would add is we, Greg did host a neighbors meeting, and then there were no, there's no remonstrance at the Plan Commission. So with that, we would respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Questions from Council?
So I, oh, I'm going, okay, all right. So to the, I was concerned when the first project was going up and thought that the finished product was absolutely amazing on the, just, just west of that. The only thing I would say here, and it's not a huge deal, it's just a little bit of a fit and finish of it. Looks a little more as a strip center versus just to the west. It looks more blended into architectural standards of the homes in the residential area. So I mean, we're, you know, we're just kind of on the final hour with this, but that's the only feedback I would give. I'm not against this. I just want you to understand that. I just think it's, it's moving a little, a little further down toward a traditional, just a traditional strip center. Instead of, if you, if you actually look at the renderings of what's up there right now, just to the west of it is, 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 is great. So I see a difference there. I'm, I'm a little.
It's not really the final hour. We just don't do first readings.
Right, well, that's, that's where, yeah.
First readings.
I, so I probably would be opposed to this on the, on this initial pass. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the project in general. I just want you to understand that. But it's, it is starkly different from what was put up just to the, just to the west. And I think with the residents in that area, they really appreciated what was, what was previously, do you happen to have pictures of that available or not?
We had that, I think, earlier at the earlier meetings. The, the, there's two buildings on the Simply Dental. This, there's the Simply Dental building that is very much almost like a house.
Right, exactly.
And then the building that's immediately, are you able to pull up the aerial? The building that's immediately adjacent to this site is, is, is very, is more of a multi-tenant building that, you know, I apologize, we don't have in the, in this material here to be able to pull that up.
Yeah, so those two right there are very much residential-looking buildings. Fits right into the.
So this building here is a Simply Dental office.
Right, yep.
This is a multi-tenant building that.
But it still looks like a larger home.
Yeah.
It does.
Well, you know, there's no, there's no rush, so it was, and Greg will be happy to come back here to work through this. And he had told me even again, at the PUD Committee had the same thing, has no issue with you, but just needs to be able to have some specific direction and guidance. And has been always throughout the whole process that just let us know what it is you'd like to see, and they're happy to kind of work through the design. And he's made changes from the PUD Committee as requested.
I was going to say, I, I just wanted to share a little bit of the history, having been involved with the PUD and the Planning Commission review. This building has evolved. I believe the earlier version did not include dormers. There were elevation differences to, right, Brad? You can help me with this. So there have been attempts to make it more, let's say, residential or garden office focused. But I, I think there probably still are some things, to your point, that can be done to, to help it, so.
I, I think what would help is just a side-by-side and just see what that is and make sure that we're within that.
Sure.
I get what they're trying to do here. I understand that. Once again, I just, it's starkly different to me.
It'd be nice if they complimented, complimented, complimented.
Complimented. You got it.
All three were, you know.
Well, they just, again, they, they took out kind of the more of the storefront glass that was more retail-oriented. Helped me too, Leah. There was also incorporation more stone in the building. But I think, again, to your point, it probably can, you know, go maybe a step or two further, and my sense is.
I think they can, and our planning department had some suggestions as well, so they can keep working to make it more fitting for the area.
And just, just from a guidance perspective, I believe that Shamrock has done all of the specific things that the PUD Committee and the staff has asked for. And Jesse's going to try to pull up Google Maps right now so we can use some technology. So you can see, we did this at the PUD Committee. We walked through it, we looked at it, and people said, okay, this, maybe if you change the color of the stone on this building to make it complimentary, not exact, but complimentary for the multi-tenant building next door. And so we were taking the specific direction there. And I know Greg will say he's fine with, if there's other specific things.
So in other words, what we're saying here, we can rezone this appropriately, we can still work with, with Shamrock and staff to upgrade and make this facility complement the other facility that's next. Is that what we're saying? My, my recommendation, Councilman Weingart, based on Steve Harden's comments, that this isn't a sense of urgency over the next 30 days. Right. I think what Steve's driving at here is what are the specific outcomes or feedback that the Council has so that he can go back and work with staff to achieve that? Because to date, I think, Steve, you're paraphrasing, you're saying we've done all the things that staff and PUD Committee have asked for. So what additionally would the Council want to provide feedback tonight? Or if we're not, for the sake of time, if we don't want to have that tonight, we can gather thoughts from Council members and staff can work directly with the, the team to work on architecture.
Part of, just to be specific, part of what I see is you've got the two roof elements on the left and the right, and you've got the dormers in the middle as opposed to.
Yeah, this looks, and I'm not an architect, okay, so I'm not trying, but, but it just, this looks flat. And I like this where there's, there's multiple. So it looks like there's a couple of residential homes connected there. It just, that, that seems like a difference to me. Does that help?
I do hear what you're saying about the residential. We had a lot of discussion at PUD Committee from the architect's perspective of trying to make it so that it doesn't look too tall and big. And there's a lot of different things with colors and mass, but I hear what you're.
Okay, all right.
The, the neighborhood didn't have a problem with this, Steve?
No, no.
Okay.
We were effectively downzoning the property from C2.
I understand, Todd, your, your personal request, but the PUD's already done all this, the Plan Commission's already done this. And then to come to us and say you're going to start all over, I don't know if that's fair to the petitioner. Because they did everything that was asked by all these other boards, and those are the boards advising us, so.
And I would say that if they would have a first reading here before, we could already have these comments out there, and therefore we wouldn't be going back and forth. So first time I'm seeing this, those, that's the feedback I have.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I think, Steve, your, your petitioner is okay with the 30-day extension here. So I do think we can work with all of you, get your direct feedback and, and bring this back.
And I'm just one person here, so if everybody's good with that, they can, they can roll.
Yeah.
So.
Is there a motion or are we just agreeing to continue? Is that what we're?
Motion table. I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. Motion made to table by John, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
I'll let Greg know that anyone on the Council that has any specific requests or feedback.
We'll, we'll work with staff to aggregate all the feedbacks if we don't get.
Yep, that'll be good. Okay, thank you.
Just, Todd, one question. Is what you would like to see is the right building to look like the left building?
Yeah, just, yeah. There's, there's some logic to that. Because it's, it's fantastic. Like what, that, that, it's fantastic. The residents love it. It fits right in there, so.
You got the feedback, Steve. You got the feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Well, probably something we'd talk further about, about the order that we have this. I know we've gone back and forth between having the first reading and not, so that's just another topic.
We can't fix that right now, but.
All right, well, let's move to item thirteen, zero three one eight one nine B. This Ross?
Good evening, for the record. Ross Hillary, City of Fishers, Planning and Zoning Department. Also proud Ball State grad with Jesse, so I was going to point that out. Thanks, Tony, for the shout-out. For the record tonight, you are seeing ordinance number zero eight one eight nineteen B, which is the final reading for the rezone of the stations at Fishers District. Little feedback, the subject property is located at 9712 as well as 9799 East 116th Street, approximately eight and a half acres. The Thompson Thrift requests a favorable decision tonight to rezon the property from PUDC to PUDM. The project includes 70,000 square feet of office commercial, 10,000 square feet of retail, a hotel, and approximately 15 townhomes. One of the things I want to point out is the connectivity that this will help with, with the Kroger Commercial Center as well as the yard of Fishers District. Here's an exhibit that was included in the PUD. You can kind of see there a bit of disconnect between the concept plan for the yard as well as the commercial Kroger Center on the right. Their plan tonight shows not only pedestrian connectivity, but also vehicular connectivity off of 116th Street would be accomplished with this rezoning. Site plan here shows mixed retail office building, commercial building along 116th Street, a hotel in the center, a boulevard connecting those two developments that I spoke of, and a mixture of front and rear townhomes. The PUD included renderings of the mixed retail office building, which was approved at the PUD Committee earlier this month. As well as elevations of both the rear and front load townhomes. The elevations of the townhomes were also approved at the PUD Committee. The petitioner would return to the PUD Committee for approval of both the commercial and hotel architecture in the future. Timeline for the project, again, PUD Committee saw the site plan as well as the office, mixed retail and townhomes on the March 6th with the three to zero approval. And Plan Commission saw this with a favorable recommendation of nine zero. There was some comments from Plan Commission that was addressed by the petitioner, and that was added to the ordinance, including some architecture on the back of those north townhomes. There was a neighborhood meeting on February 25th that Thompson Thrift hosted. There was no issues at that night. So with that, staff recommends that City Council holds this final reading and approves the stations at Fishers District rezone. Petitioner is also here to answer any questions.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm pleased to be here representing Thompson Thrift. And with me from Thompson Thrift is Mr. Don Potter, and also from Polty Homes, Mr. Dave Compton and Mr. Rex Ramager here. The only other thing I was going to add was that we did not have any remonstrance from the neighbors, and I think Ross covered that after our neighbors meeting. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, we would respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you.
Questions from Council?
I have some questions, just, just some things about this, this project. Originally, when we started, how much was the original, original investment by Thompson Thrift?
Just on the, for the station?
Just the original part.
Forty-five million, is that right?
How much?
The original, you're talking about all three phases of the yard.
How much the original, what we originally started with in this project?
On the yard was 45 million, I think.
Forty-five million.
Roughly correct.
And during, during that period of time, how much additional investment has Thompson Thrift entertained and also got online with respect to this project, including this one we're talking about tonight? Rough numbers?
Hundred and twenty, hundred and forty million, somewhere in that range.
Hundred and forty million. We start with 45, another 120 million, correct? How much is, again, just for public purposes, what, how much is the city as far as what is our investment in this project?
I believe between the garage and our original, we're probably at the 10 to 12 million range.
10 to 12 million, and we've had to acquire to do any more investing above and beyond what Thompson Thrift, so we were in for 45 million starting out. We did what, 10 million?
Yeah.
And we got another how many million on top of that?
Yeah, so it's been, yeah, it's a great problem to have there.
It's a great problem to have, absolutely it is.
Yeah.
How much, how much, and, and any idea what taxation will come off this project that will generate and bypass through the referendum? Any thoughts? I, I don't, again, I'm guess, I don't know. So I didn't know the numbers.
You're putting me on the spot here. A hundred and forty million, if you assume it's assessed at that dollar amount, it's 140,000 times 22 cents.
Do you want the Riverside math team to help you?
Yeah, they left too early.
I would, it's north of $100,000.
Okay, another $100,000, plus we have the base increment, which is homes that were there before.
Well, keep in mind, those homes weren't even in Fishers.
Yeah, that's correct. They were an unincorporated Delaware township, so they weren't part of the Fishers tax base. We brought those in. They are part of the Fishers tax base now. I guess the point I'm trying to make, and this has been a tremendous investment opportunity for our community. And, and it's not only been a great benefit for our community, but also for our schools, and we're going to have additional increment coming out of the ground that otherwise wouldn't have been there and not even been a part of Fishers, just to make that point. And we're not, we're not investing anymore. We're not, our budget's not, we're not doing anything else there, correct? At this point?
Not at this point, no.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had to make my point.
So there won't be any additional requests, because you guys are, because there's a creek that goes through now, and so you're going to fill that in. There's a lot of extra civil costs?
Yeah, we, I mean, we, that's not on the agenda tonight, but that's coming. There is a, we've been discussing, we've even had discussions with city leadership throughout the process. been discussing, we've even had discussions with city leadership throughout the process, some of the unusual costs associated with this project, but I'll come back before you, before anything happens.
Of course.
Yeah, thank you.
That's my point.
Thank you, David.
But there is a little...
There may be some more.
Yes. The one question I had when I look at this, I almost look at it as though there are puzzle pieces, and I think you guys have done a great job with everything that you're putting in the ground and everything you said you were going to do. So you've got the front part that has the white house, and then you've got the creek. Kind of just bear with me for a minute. It goes through the middle, and then you've got the area in the back, and you've got the townhomes in the back, and then to the front, you have the hotel where kind of the creek goes. And then my thought is, in the future, sometimes it's better to have a little bit of natural terrain, so if there is some additional costs, we could actually save those costs, leave that middle part somewhat as it is, and then you could have some area in the front. That could be the office or the hotel. Now, you would not have one of the uses, and then in the back, you would still have the residential. So I just wanted to throw that out to the group. When I look at this, I almost see that there's an opportunity to leave some of that middle part, and you would give up one of the uses, but you could have either the hotel or the office up front, and you could have the residential to the back. But then you'd still have a nice project, and then you still have some of the terrain that's there now for the future.
Is that a legal drain? I think it's a legal drain.
It is.
Yeah, so you've got pretty significant setbacks that are going to be required there, so I think what I understood, they're going to pipe that, right?
Yes.
So I know you give up that, but I mean, my worry is, this isn't that large of a site, and you start to lose usable area, just being sensitive to it. You know, I guess I wanted to make a couple of points that came out in the planning commission. I mean, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but there were a couple of things, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge what the petitioner did to modify the site plan, because there was actually a relatively significant reduction of townhomes to preserve more of that commercial in the site, but I think the benefits of this connectivity to Kroger and the yard is beneficial. But one thing that came up was concerns over traffic safety through that drive that goes through there, and I think it was going to be okay to just install some sort of stop signs there to kind of, you know, I guess discourage people from racing through. The second thing that was material was that the elevation of the building was so attractive from the front that the site plan didn't really depict what was going on there. It was a narrower front, and I just wanted to acknowledge that one thing that the petitioner said they were going to look at is the idea of maybe shifting that drive out to One Hundred Sixteenth Street so that the orientation is maximized and really presents such, you may remember, if you recall, the elevation or rendering that was presented, I mean, it's a very attractive front, and I think that's what we want to see, so we didn't want to see the side of the building. And I guess back to your concern, I understand what you're saying, but I just, I can also understand from the development perspective what impact that may have on the overall development.
Particularly, I think, some of our early meetings with the city leadership, including council, has been to encourage, you know, like I think you just described, to encourage more of the commercial and less of the townhomes, which has been pushed down and, you know, to accommodate that. So I think that that would probably be a pretty difficult thing to try to dramatically change the concept plan at this point.
Have you applied for the variance on the drainage board yet, Steve?
I'm not aware of that. This is Don Potter with Thompson Thrift.
Good evening. Actually, what the ditch out there was a legal drain that collected the water from the Fishers District, all the residential properties. When we did that project, this legal drain here was vacated, so there is still a legal drain adjacent to it, but it is piped under the ground in a sixty-inch pipe.
So the open drain is no longer...
So the open drain is no longer, correct, so we'll fill that in.
Other questions, comments?
I just wondered about landscaping, trees and things, because right now I don't see like a landscape plan or anything like that. Will there be more like trees or shrubbery around the development?
Oh, yeah, it's going to be, it's not changing, it'll be consistent.
It's not just going to be asphalt and pavement.
No, 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 I mean, it's just not on the detail, we're not to that level yet, but you'll have the full landscaping plan, just like under the UDO that we've defaulted to.
Okay. John? If anybody wished to make a motion?
Make a motion approve.
Motion made by John, second?
Second.
Second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
Thank you very much.
Six one?
Yep.
Six one. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is item fourteen zero three one eight one nine C.
Good evening, for the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you is a request to vacate a portion of the right-of-way within the Arborpines subdivision, section one. So Arborpines on this map, sorry, it's a little hard to see here, is located in the very southeast corner of Fishers, so just west of Fortville, just east of the Bridger Pine subdivision. So to give you some history on why this is being requested, this development was first approved by council, the PUD ordinance, in two thousand and six. Construction began on section one in about two thousand and seventeen, so the streets and utilities have been installed for section one, and the homes are currently under construction. Fortville Water Utility provides public water to this neighborhood, and its water meter pits are located in the front yards, just a few feet outside of the street right-of-way. Over the past years, the City of Fishers has revised our standard right-of-way width for neighborhood streets, so increasing the width from fifty feet to fifty-six feet. In this case with Arborpines, the development plans correctly provided the fifty-six required right-of-way. However, the water meter pits were incorrectly staked and installed based on the previous fifty-foot right-of-way, resulting in the water meter pits straddling the right-of-way line. So, the top street cross-section shows the approved fifty-six-foot right-of-way. So this was approved to accommodate the wider planting strip between the sidewalk and the curb to help with street tree plantings. And then the one on the bottom shows the fifty-three-foot requested right-of-way tonight, so vacating a total of three feet of right-of-way. This will ensure that the water meter pits are now installed on private property, which is according to the Fortville Water Utility Regulations, it needs to be placed on private property, not within the right-of-way. And it's also a recommendation of our Public Works Department that that be provided on private property. The water system, all the water meter pits for section one have been installed, and the system's currently in operation and has passed all necessary testing. So instead of relocating those water meter pits, we're just requesting that the right-of-way be vacated on those local roads. Section two will then also be revised to be consistent with the fifty-three feet that we see today. The PUD will also need to be, there's going to be a text amendment to the PUD that will go before planning commission next month, and then council will probably see it next month as well. Steve Harden is here, as well, representing the petitioner.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden, and I'm pleased to be here representing the developer, August Development LLC, which is an affiliate of Boomerang Development, Corby Thompson. Their contractor is who our client is also in this case, and unlike other projects where we're here talking about significant land use and planning issues, this is one where they're really requesting mercy from the city council, and the, as Megan did a great job, of making something that's relatively complex much more simple. The plans were prepared correctly, approved correctly, and then, as a result of the change of the different right-of-way cross-sections, the meter pits were installed kind of under the old way of doing it, and where they were located could cause interference with where the sidewalks would normally go, and from a safety perspective from the sidewalks, it was, they wanted to be able to make sure that that didn't happen by having those water meter pits not right on the right-of-way line. So the first question was, well then, why don't you just tear them out and just redo them? And what I've learned from this project was that, once they're already installed and operational, there is a, there's a degradation that just happens. We just have to start ripping out infrastructure and putting it back in. It was viewed as that it was more appropriate, after speaking with the Town of Fortville Utility, the planning department, engineering department here, to have one and a half feet of the right-of-way vacated, so that we're keeping the infrastructure where it's in place, and then just pulling the right-of-way in a little bit, and it wasn't causing any trouble for the city from a engineering or right-of-way perspective. So this is really, I think, one of the first times I've ever come before you, and on behalf of a client, ask for mercy, but that's really what it is. They physically could do it. They physically could go and rip everything out and put it back in, but it felt like it was appropriate to be able to just revise the right-of-way on this particular case, so that's what we're here requesting tonight. And as Megan mentioned, then they would be back in front of you next month with a small change to the PUD text as well. Thank you very much.
Stephen, question?
Yes, sir.
This is, the water served by this town in Fortville?
That's correct.
Does their service extend west to these other projects that were recently developed? And is, are they, I guess, immune from this problem, or?
They don't have, there's no issue with how those were installed. I don't recall where their service area, it seems like it probably could go to there. I don't know how far west they go, but they don't have, the other developments that are already in or not don't have the same issue.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I think it makes sense, and I'll be supportive. The only thing I want to bring up is, I know, Mr. Mayor, you've met with us on street trees, and we're going to create another issue. This is probably already so narrow, but you go from seven and a half to six, and so I don't, is there something else that we need to look at for their landscaping, so that maybe we shift that? So we approve this, it gets more narrow?
I'd be open to it.
Maybe we look at that later on, you know what I mean?
Clearly, I don't want to fix any more sidewalk panels than we need to.
Yep, yep.
So if we can prevent it.
And I don't mean lessen landscape requirements, I mean just shift it. You guys can work through that.
Move the street tree to the front yard or something like that.
Good to surface that, yeah, we'll circle back on that.
Okay, thanks. I'd make a motion to...
Rich, this requires a public hearing.
Oh, this is a public hearing? I didn't realize that, okay. So this is a public hearing, I've just been informed. Are there members of the public that would wish to speak? If so, if you would state your name and address for the record, you'd be given three minutes. Any members who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Chris.
Now you can have a motion to suspend, if you like.
Make a motion to suspend and vote on our first reading.
I'll second.
Motion made by David, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by David, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item fifteen zero two one eight one nine E.
Rich, before Tony gets going, this ordinance was tabled at the last council meeting, so if we could have a motion to reconsider before Tony presents it.
I see, okay, thank you. So is there a motion to reconsider? This was the one that got tabled at the last meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Was there any issue, I mean?
No, I think we got it worked out.
Okay, you're good? Okay.
Was there, were there maintenance bonds that were supposed to be included?
So for the discussion...
We've got to open it first, so... Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, so there's a motion made by John, second by?
Brad made the motion.
Brad made the motion. Second by John.
All right, thank you. So all in favor of reopening this?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Very good, okay, so now we can hear from you, Tony?
Okay, again, good evening. Tony Begato, Director of Planning and Zoning, and as Chris indicated, this item was before you last month for an amendment to our surety standards. And towards the end of the meeting, there was discussion between the mayor and Brad and the council members about, you know, trying to hone in on two focal points with the ordinance. So in the amendment before you tonight, under item three of the ordinance, that's where the two changes occurred. It should be A, and then B with the underlying sections. So A says built to the applicable standards, so what we're highlighting here is that, you know, we want these things inspected and making sure they were built to the standards in place by the city. If they were not built to those standards, and it was a developer's fault, the developer would be responsible as part of that inspection to fix that. If it was built to the standard or wasn't, and the city missed that, then the city would be liable for that. And then the second part, B, gets to the neglect due to maintenance, and so we heard concerns that there's been a lack of maintenance or deferred maintenance by the time these areas get turned over to the HOA, and now the HOA, as the residents, are responsible for fixing it. And so this added language is in there. That's what we're proposing tonight, based on the discussion we had. I will point out that Chris did meet with Attorney Tim Oaks for Polty, who mentioned in lieu of this ordinance, they would prefer to see maintenance bonds on all these areas. That would give a three-year bond cover over the ponds and all the infrastructure that we're talking about, but that is separate of this. Staff's recommendation from when we worked with, initially with Councilmember Dreamer, that this was the best approach to kind of catch long-term development, if that's what the council chooses to do, because a maintenance bond can only go up to three years, and so in the case of a development goes longer, this would go, that gives us a surety beyond that. So with that, it was shared with Baggy on Friday, and I have not heard any comments yet, but there's some members here, as well as Polty, and I'm not sure if they want to speak to this matter, but the maintenance bonds, I don't recall it discussed during the actual council meeting. It was more discussed by Chris and Tim Oaks as an option, and we've decided to pursue this option. The council, again, can choose a different direction if you choose, but this is what's presented for you tonight as an amendment. Ultimately, if there's an amendment approved by council, that will have to still go back to planning commission and be reviewed there, and if they approve it, that's the final decision. If they don't approve it, it'll come back once again. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Well, I thought that there was discussion on the maintenance bond, so I just wanted clarification on that.
Maintenance bond, the project item is thirteen years, so it only covers the first three, the last ten would not be covered. Maintenance bond doesn't make any sense, I'm guessing, in my opinion.
Well, all right, so I've had some discussion as recently as today about this, and I guess I would like to have further discussion about that. I saw merit in maintenance bonds applying to detention ponds, and I believe street trees, right, that would be in addition to what we are already requiring for sidewalks, streets, curbs, the works. And my understanding was from the developer, and I guess what then was a meeting that Tim Oaks had with Chris, is part of the benefit that I understood from the development community was that it was able to, at the front end, define a limit there, but also you have protection, because I think in most cases, if there's a failure due to installation, it's going to occur initially. I think honestly, it gives us the ability, it's probably easier for us as a city to go back after the bond if something fails. Now granted, long-term, you're right. If it's beyond three years, you know, something could happen, but quite frankly, with so much of our detention ponds and other that are out there, they all have silt that builds up, and I just, I have a problem with it just being extended indefinitely. So that's a concern I have, and I guess I was not aware, I thought that actually this was within the ordinance until Cecilia asked the question earlier today, but I see merit to that. I understand there's also a legal question, and I'm not sure I can really define this, but a privity of contract, so I guess that relates to the, I guess, parties not being included in the relationship between the two contract parties. So I can't really define exactly what that problem is, but that's another question that exists, too. I know this is not a public hearing, but if anybody can help provide clarity, I'd like to invite that.
So question, question, Rich, just, because we've worked with Councilmember Dreamer on this, and I guess I have a clarifying question from the statement you just made. I don't think anybody, and I don't want to speak for Brad, but I don't think anybody would be opposed to additional public infrastructure included in a bond for the first three years. The question on what happens to a development that isn't going to be closed out in three years, that goes five, seven, ten years, which frankly, the idea that that's going to happen a lot in Fishers going forward probably isn't all that often, and that's, when we crafted the language in this, we crafted the language in such a way that says, A, there's a scenario where they didn't build it the way they were supposed to build it, which, you know, I think there's culpability there and needs to be dealt with. The second one was about this gross negligence concept that said, if I live in a subdivision, and this subdivision isn't going to be turned over to the HOA for eight, nine, ten years, and I'm not in control of the HOA, and for whatever reason that developer decides, "I'm not going to spend any money on maintaining these assets the way I should," that at the point that threshold kicks in and says, "Okay, now, HOA, here's your subdivision with all the infrastructure," at that point of turnover, the conversation is, there should be a third party that says whether or not there are routine maintenance issues, or whether there's gross negligence. there's gross negligence. The way we drafted this way, that Chris drafted it, was to take out the scenarios where, yeah, this is routine maintenance, that this is what you would expect after eight years to see something, look at, look at this level of, you know, depreciation, if you will. What we're really trying to catch here are the, the bad actors, if you will. If someone were to just completely neglect their responsibility in the infrastructure and not allow the residents of that subdivision to maintain it with the HOA dues that they're paying, that there'd be some catch-up at that point where the developer would have to make that right. So I just want to clarify that, we're not, we're not talking about bringing all public infrastructure at the point of conveyance up to pristine and brand-new. We're trying to catch if someone just completely was negligent in their attempt at maintaining the asset. Does that help clarify that?
It does, but I, I still go back to even what, what I remember Corby raising during the discussion of, you know, the fact that there would have to be, I think what he was trying to do is make sure that there is as much, I don't want to say affordability, that's the wrong way of putting it, but the worry being that reserves have to be established for this, you know, whatever the period is for the takeover of, of the ponds, that they have to reserve for this final inspection that might be seven or eight years out from when the, the project started. So I knew that was a concern. I will tell you, I, I'm not that hung up on it, I mean, it's just not that important, but I, I want to be respectful
Sure.
of what I've heard and the concerns that were raised from some of the people so that others can appreciate it, because it was a little different than what I was understanding was going to be crafted.
The conversations I have with Corby, all of those have been, go ahead. I had breakfast with him, I listened to him and agreed with him and the mayor and I put in what Corby asked me.
I, I think the broader question that you bring up, Rich, and I, I would be surprised if Baggy would be supportive of adding additional public infrastructure into the three-year maintenance, if that is on top of what we're also asking for, which is this.
I understood that Tim Oaks was representing Baggy when he had the meeting, that's, that's what I heard, so.
I think they're probably providing you an either-or
Okay.
scenario, not a that plus this. I mean, I don't know.
Chris, do you want to comment?
I think it was an either-or, I think.
Oh, it was either-or?
It was, I think the conversation was, it's easier to define on a maintenance bond standard going forward than it is to have a reinspection as we've proposed it.
But I, I can't emphasize enough the language in here, we were very specific to not hold developers accountable for what is routine depreciation of an asset. This is about neglect.
Okay.
Where we could demonstrate that these folks have taken all the HOA money, hoarded it for whatever reason, spent it on something else
Right.
and then you're going to turn over all these public assets to the homeowners and they're going to be stuck with.
Which is, I know Brad, you had said that was your primary concern.
Yeah, and, and, and the mayor's done a good job. I, I appreciate him listening to me and listening to the other side and, and I think this ordinance is better than Carmel's ordinance and I think it does everything that Corby, I, I'll use Corby, not all developers, because Corby's the only one I talked to, we eliminated his concerns. If, if Corby installs something and the city says it's okay and then the engineer comes back and says it's not, Corby's still off the hook. The city's on the hook. So Corby's thing was, if I get it approved, how are you going to come back? And we put that in there. If the city approves it, the developer's off the hook. And, and that was the biggest concern that Corby had and I didn't have a problem with it, as long as we put the sentence in, then the city's on the hook. And that's fine. Somebody has to be responsible for it, not the homeowner. Somebody has to be.
Let, let me just also take this forward, if you can, Chris, if you can address this, because, because this was tabled and there have been some changes to it, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would go back to Planning Commission?
Yeah, so what we were tasked with was coming up with an amendment consistent with your conversation at last month's council meeting. So we drafted an amendment for your consideration, so that amendment would have to be raised tonight and approved. If that amendment got approved, which is different than what was sent to you from the Plan Commission, that amendment would go back to the Plan Commission for their further consideration. If the Plan Commission approved that amendment, then it would be adopted at the Plan Commission's meeting. If the Plan Commission had further revisions or rejected it, it would come back to the council for one last say.
Got a couple of questions. Do staff feel that this, and Brad, I'll, I'll lean on you a little bit, because you're the one that really, kind of the champion of this, do you feel this offers the, the proper protection for our residents and their communities?
Yes, I, I'm satisfied with it. The, the advisory board, the, the people that I deal with are happy.
Okay. And you, and we don't feel that it, it gives undue burden to developers along the way as well?
No, this is, we, we are elected to protect the residents. This protects the residents.
Residents are number one with me, I got to make sure they're protected. So I guess from my perspective, if we have something here that's, that provides better protections to our residents, it also gives us that opportunity to step in if we need to, but also holds them, holds everybody accountable that needs to be, it's much better than what we had a month ago when we went back and forth for probably 20 minutes on this. So I guess I'm going to throw, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by John, second by Brad.
Request roll call vote.
Okay.
And to clarify, John, you're making a motion to approve the amendment that was brought forward tonight, correct?
Sorry?
You're, you're making a motion to approve the amendment that was brought forward.
That's correct, yeah.
So Jen?
Yes. Rich?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank Brad and all the team here, did a lot of great work and.
I thank the city for, for working with me on this, we come up with a solution.
Okay, item 16R031819F.
Good evening, once again, Tony Begato, Director of Planning and Zoning. The item before you is request approval of a deficiency report and exhibit was in your staff report and I'll highlight it here tonight on the overhead. This is the area that's currently known as Geis Waterfront Park, that's been acquired by the city. As part of the acquisition, there is a cell tower on the property and that, that cell tower is already existing and it, since this is all considered one parcel today, it currently complies with all the development standards within the UDO. As we go to develop the park, though, we're going to create separate parcels and that little red dot I'll try to highlight here, right there, is a red dot, that is where the cell tower is and the city is going to sell that to the carrier. It's not a land we need to own, but now creating a new parcel, the, the tower will no longer comply with a setback requirement under the UDO. Since it's currently owned by the city, as a municipal governmental agency, the city council can grant, grant a deficiency report and approve the tower to be legal without having to comply with the setbacks. If the council didn't choose to do that, we could seek a variance as well, but this is an option since we're the current owners and the quickest way for us to deal with, again, today it complies, but once we create a legal lot to sell it, it will no longer comply with the setback from the road. So with that, staff's available for any questions and Chris as well?
Yeah, sorry, Tony, if, if the council recalls, about a month or two ago, I came before you for the land transfer, we were getting ready to close on this transaction and this clarification of the zoning item's really the only remaining item before we close out on the transaction, so appreciate your support in this.
Any questions, comments by council? Motion by anyone? Motion by Todd?
Second.